Test one, two, three. Test one, two, three.
Thank you. I would ask that you give me a minute as the board gets ready to start this meeting, and that you show me the same respect that I've shown all of you at least for the last four to six weeks, and including the last meeting. Thank you. Okay. Before we start, I'm going to say two things. First of all, I know a number of you have signs here. It makes it very difficult for us to see both the audience, and for the audience to see us. I would ask that all signs be kept lowered, and that you don't walk around with them. It creates an unsafe environment in this room. I'm trying here, okay?[1542.19][1542.19](Applause). No, we're not going to clap for each other. We're just going to listen right now. Okay? Thank you. Second of all, if you don't have your mask on, I ask that you put a mask on, in order for the safe -- no, we're not, we're not going to go there right now. If you don't want to wear a mask, and would like to go into the gymnasium, and you have your name on the list, I am perfectly happy to call and have you come down here and speak. Still, it's not going to diminish your opportunity to speak before this board. If we can manage to keep ourselves together as a community, then we will be able to get through all 31 speakers who have signed up. If we can't, then we won't be able to get through it. And the board will suspend the meeting, and we'll just do the business that we need to do. It's really an option of this group. I don't want this to deteriorate. We have children in this room, we have community members in this room, and I don't want to marginalize anyone's voice. But it was clearly stated that there were some parameters, and we are in a school board, a school building, and we've asked that the people in this building be masked. So I ask you to please do that. The second thing is, a number of you asked us to change the venue. And we did do that. But with the change of venue, was also the change with protecting a larger group of So the options are, you can stay here and wear a mask, or you can go out to the gym. You can stay here and keep your sign down, or you can go out to the gym, or out to the commons area and use your sign. Those are the only options tonight. Other than that, we're going to hold a regular meeting. Those are the decisions.
Is the gym not part of the school?
It is, but it allows those people, it allows those people who want to exercise that freedom to go into the gym.
(Cheering)
Okay. All right, all right. All right.
(Cheering)
I'm --
Look everybody, with masks on there, let us have the meeting here.
Okay, okay. Can, can you please stop? I haven't, I haven't yelled at anybody in this room. I haven't, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Wait a second. Wait a second. Wait a second. We're going to take another deep breath, and we're going to do that all night if it means I have to stay here till three o'clock in the morning, so that all, and I know, that's fine, that's fine, that's, that's fine, that's fine. In order for all 31 people to talk, that's fine. But we need to pull ourselves together and get through this. You're right, you do have rights. And we have a right, this is the school board, to make some decisions too. So, here we go, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue. Board members? Board? Board member? Okay, here we go. We're going to start this meeting. We're going to start this meeting, and we're going to get through it. And I'm going to ask those people in the back to put their signs down. Okay, okay, all right. Board members? We're going to start with our agenda. The meeting's called to order. I need to approve the agenda as presented. Motion?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McCulkin, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fulk, any questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to take a moment of silence. Thank you. We're going to move into information items. Here's some information items that the superintendent is going to present to us. I would ask that you allow him to make those presentations, and that, once we finish that, we will do public comments. Thank you.
Members of the board and public, as we said in our email, tonight's information item about COVID is basically a review of where we are as a community in terms of disease spread, and what the different pieces are that we look at, and had to look at actually, when it comes to deciding how to move forward. And I will say that, just like for most of the last year and a half, the decisions involve a number of different sources that don't always agree, we'll freely admit, right, there's, in some of the information we get, we have to look at what the politics of it are, it's not always solid information, we weed through a lot of information. But I also get a lot of emails every day, social media, of course, there are a lot of posts about this. And so, there are some slides in here, you know, that talk a little bit about what good information we've received from people who are opposed to masking requirements, what information is not as solid, and where we are in terms of our requirements. Because as a school division, of course, we don't just have the freedom to decide whatever we like, there are some parameters that we have to follow. And I will also say that, just this afternoon, I was on the phone with Delegate Woltz's office to also have conversations about this, to see what information we can get from Richmond to clarify some of the pieces. So, Delta variant, everyone's aware at this point, that the latest variant has led to increased cases across, not just Virginia, the country, the world, in Europe, you know, many countries are now, again, taking similar steps, and, you know, the same in other parts of the world that are being taken in the United States. And, so this isn't really a Virginia issue, or a United States issue, this is, basically plays out the same way across the globe. Rockingham County, over the last seven days, has seen a 41% increase in cases. Last week, if you looked from Thursday, and the reason it's only 41%, by the way, is because there was a significant increase even in the days before, so it was 122% increase from the Thursday before to last Thursday. So these numbers are going up, we're nowhere near the numbers we had over the winter break, but some of our days now have been as high as they have been since March and April. If we look at the vaccination rate, it's a little tricky, so we have to be careful, and I will point this out too. So when we see a vaccination rate of 10% for age group under 18, that can be used a number of different ways, because, oh my god, it's only 10%. Well, we do have to remember that no one age 11 and younger is even eligible. So, when we see 10%, that really means the entire group under 18, so that's on the VDH website, and we look at that carefully, right, to say, well, 10%, that can't quite be. And so when you look at the different age groups that are actually eligible for the vaccine, it's still not exactly where public health officials say it should be, but it's 26% for 12 to 15-year-olds, and then 35.6% for those who are 16 and 17. And those numbers are important to remember, because that means, in our schools, when all students are back, two-thirds of students will be unvaccinated, right? So that comes into play later on when I talk about, but just remember that. So it's not 10%, 10% includes all the 11 and younger. And so the sources are there, and so we do have to take a look, you know, at this information, so it's important. We've talked a lot last spring about physical distancing and masks. This is a study that we looked at, it's also important to point out why, you know, the three-foot distance there is, you know, highlighted in a way, and it has to do with the distance we can use to bring all kids back to school. I'll talk a little bit later about the law. If we want to have all students back in school, and there's enormous benefit for having the kids back, there's no question about that, we can't operate at the six-foot distance that early on was the distance that the CDC and World Health Organization recommended, and we in fact went to three feet, to make sure that we could bring kids back, but there are implications of that. And a lot of the conversation is, when it comes to masks, is about, you know, why can't we make masks optional? If I want my child to wear a mask, they can wear a mask, and others can make that decision for their child. Well, that's, that's a solid question, right? And that's why I'm, you know, looking at this slide, because when you look at the difference in masking, there is an enormous benefit of, when you have a student who is positive, and a student who is not infected, for both to wear a mask, and in fact, the protection is greater if only one is masked. It's more important for the person who tests positive to be masked, than the person who is simply, you know, in that three-foot radius there where they could get infected. And both masks, both masks, has the biggest benefit. So both masks is at the bottom, when the dead particle study is less than a half a percent of the particles that carry, that are the size that could carry COVID, are actually reaching the person that's on the other end. If it is only the target masked, then you have 7.5% or 6.3% of the particles still getting through. So that's with the cloth masks, and then at the top with the surgical mask, similar, less than half a percent both masked, well, the source masked, and then the other person masked, 17%. So we have to remember, it's most important that the person who has the virus is masked, and then there's additional benefit for the other person to be masked, right? And again, that comes in when we talk about quarantine. Now, a lot of the information I got had statements like, well, the virus is so small that it will easily pass through a mask. Well, if you look at an individual viral particle, that's true, but there was a review of all the research into this, and one of the person I highlighted, and it's really highlighted for a reason, is Lindsay Moore, she's a scientist at Virginia Tech. She studies aerosols, so she studies how particles actually become airborne, but she also is an epidemiologist, so she's one of the very few people who study both. And a lot of it has to do, you know, with the language between the medical community and those that study, you know, just particle physics, and they actually found out over the last year, that particles can be airborne at a much larger size than they originally thought. So previously, they thought, okay, you know, the particles you exhale, they fall to the ground within six feet, that's where the six-foot rule came from. But then they realized, in her research, that particles 20 times that size would still be suspended in air, and unless there was additional ventilation, those particles could linger. And that's why where masks come in, because at that size, this is where originally they said, well, six feet you're good, because all the particles that carry COVID, the COVID virus, fall to the floor. Not so. And in fact, last August, our teachers, you know, pointed us to some of the research, and so we, again, checked with the experts, and Lindsay Moore, almost single-handedly, really changed how these transmissions are now studied, and so they looked at all this. And so, some of the myths, right, that everything larger than five micrometers falls to the floor within one, to two meters, three to six feet, that's not accurate. Surgical masks actually will work if airborne particles are suspended, and also, the virus being so small, does actually not affect the viability of masks, because it doesn't travel in single viral particles, it travels in droplets that people exhale. And so that's important. And so, whenever people send me information, I do check, and in fact, there's some really good information that I get, that also is surprising, right? So just today, or yesterday, I saw a post that, you know, I know some of you have seen, because it's on social media, so, The Wall Street Journal, opinion piece, right, the case against masks. And so, this is when, you know, the chief of pediatric infectious diseases at Tufts Children Hospital writes about this, that's serious stuff, right? So we have to take that into account. Nobody in education would argue that having education henceforth, forever, in masks is as good as education without masks. Children read faces, there's a lot about reading instruction, there is an impact on that, right? So, it's never all or nothing. These are difficult conversations, and when we talk to experts, it is about what, which part outweighs the other, if we're just talking about the science. So, I do want to give credit to those who send us stuff that doesn't, you know, meet what I usually see, or what we've heard on TV, that is good information, that masks also have other side effects. So we have to be careful, right, to not just discount that. But at the same time, we also have to remember that we need to check information, just because someone posts a research paper, doesn't mean it's accurate, right? People make data mistakes, plenty of them. And I'll give you two examples. One, there's a lot of talk on social media about masks leading to carbon dioxide poisoning. It's based on this study here, and was actually, the original research letter was published in the Journal of the American Medical Association, so raising eyebrows for sure, have to take it seriously. But had to be retracted last week, because when peers review it and look at what conclusions were drawn from what data, didn't hold up, right? So we have to also acknowledge that. It goes both ways, and we have to make sure we understand what we're really looking at. The other one, this was presented, a video that's going viral on Facebook about, I think this one was an eye doctor, ophthalmologist, that talked about how the CDC, or it might have been the physician assistant out in Texas, who talked about how the CDC is telling all these labs to no longer use PCR tests, because they don't work, and because they can't distinguish between influenza and SARS-CoV-2, the virus that causes COVID. And when I first saw this, I read, I always check the source, I read the CDC piece, and it said, and I read this, about distinguishing between SARS-CoV-2 and influenza, and I was like, this is really strange, I got to dig a little bit deeper. Now, the first indicator that it's not quite what it seems, is that they're saying, December 31st, 2021, the CDC will no longer ask for emergency use authorization for these PCR tests. And when you look at what it actually means, and I checked so many sources, this is all over the world, health agencies in Australia, everywhere on the planet, they, they looked at this and said, no, that's actually not what it says. What it says is, that the current PCR tests measure only for COVID. And anyone who's been to a doctor over the last year, many physicians want to rule out COVID, and they want to rule out SARS-CoV-2, for the virus that causes, and influenza, sorry. So, COVID and influenza. And what the CDC is saying is, that there are now alternatives on the market, that don't just test for COVID, they test for influenza, and they test for COVID, all in one test. And that's why, beginning December 31st, they will no longer recommend that the single test is used, it has nothing to do with the test not being able to distinguish. And so, we have to be careful. That caught my attention too, I was like, wait a second, there might be something to this, but there isn't, okay? So we have to be careful. There are pediatricians in Harrisonburg, right, I've had conversations with pediatricians who are in favor of masks, those that are opposed to masks, we can find a number of, even epidemiologists, right, who argue the other side. And so, when we have to make a decision just on the merits, it is important to look at what is the scientific consensus meaning, what's the overwhelming view on this? Again, none of us want to have masks as a permanent feature in education, none of us do. There are costs to that. But, when the American Academy of Pediatrics, the same organization everyone loved when they said, kids need to be back in school full-time, when they then turn around and say, masking should be universal, for now, then I take that very seriously, because that's an organization that represents the entirety of pediatrics in the United States. Not every pediatrician agrees, but we take that seriously, right? And Virginia Department of Health and CDC, originally, maybe a month ago, said, you know, with the current disease trends, and what we see with vaccinations, masks could be optional in schools. And we actually considered that, right? And until just recently, we really had serious conversations about what do we do, for example, at the high school level? Every high school student has a choice to be vaccinated, if the family allows it, all right? Every staff member has a chance to be vaccinated. At that level, should we make it optional? Right? Serious conversation. Different at the elementary level, because at the elementary level, not a single kid has a chance to be vaccinated. So we have to treat that differently. And so we talked about, can we set a timer? From the day the vaccine becomes available for 2- to 11-year-olds, which we expect to happen this fall, let's set a timer for when every child has had that chance, and then masks are optional. And so, these are all the conversations we've had, what's a reasonable compromise? Because it's hardly ever clearly one way and clearly the other. I want to make that clear. And that's really the conversation we've had. It is critical that we prioritize in-person learning, but it's important to remember that masks have a major impact on keeping kids in school, and not just because of what the science says about preventing disease. Last year, when the CDC and VDH announced that students could now be in school at three-foot distancing, what they also said, they said it's safe, three-foot distancing with masks. But what they also said is, if a student tests positive, then we have to quarantine kids at a six-foot radius. And so, we called them on that, we said, so either it's safe or it's not safe. We said, so either it's safe or it's not safe, right? So if it's safe at three feet with masks, well, I mean, if no one's positive, then we don't need any masks, right? So if it's safe at three feet with masks, how can the quarantine rule be at six feet? And in fact, in April, when we looked at our information and said that we had to quarantine 200 kids in the span of two weeks, and not one of those kids tested positive as a result of that three-foot exposure with masks, that's good information. And Indiana, Ohio, they'd already gone to that same rule. And we said, as a school division, we will no longer quarantine at three feet when both students wore a mask. And that is now, by the way, CDC guideline, right? So they followed that months later. And so we don't always go immediately by what an agency says. We do look at it seriously, right? And so we changed that. But here's what's important to remember. So right now, if we brought kids back with optional masks and a student tests positive in that classroom, if that student didn't wear a mask, every student around that student has to be now quarantined for 10 days. Has to be quarantined for 10 days regardless of whether they wore a mask or not because the student who tested positive wasn't wearing a mask. And so you saw earlier how the most important feature of masks, according to Johns Hopkins, is the person who's positive wearing it. That would have a huge impact on how many kids we can have in school. And I can give you an example. An Arkansas school, if you saw that on the news, within two weeks, 900 staff and students had to be quarantined because people weren't wearing a mask and then someone tested positive and now the exceptions didn't apply anymore. There are two exceptions. One is at least three feet and both students wear the mask, or a student who is the close contact is vaccinated and doesn't have symptoms. Those are the two exceptions. So now we could still have that conversation, by the way, at the high school because we could say, well, if you don't want to quarantine, you know, get your vaccine and the student that tests positive is going to be quarantined anyway. So we're still thinking through those, right? Would that even be possible down the road once everyone has that chance for the vaccine? But right now, it doesn't exist, right? So at the elementary level, these kids would be quarantined if there weren't masks in the room. That's quarantine rules that we have no, we don't define the quarantine rules. We can say, we don't initiate it, but VDH will, right? So at this point, VDH is going to call a family and say, you were a close contact, both students weren't wearing masks, home for 10 days, 14 actually, according to VDH. We're working, even there, we're working with like 10-day quarantines, right? So we're trying to be cognizant of the fact that we want the kids in the building, but the way we can keep them in the building does involve that. Now, if the numbers in the community were low enough that that doesn't apply because we hardly have any cases anymore, right? If we're getting back to that, now you maybe can do that. But our numbers are the way they were in April, when we quarantined 200 kids in two weeks. And if we prioritize in-person education, I don't know what to say when we have to quarantine at 200, 300 kids every two weeks, right? And it's not just the students that said, I don't want to wear a mask. The students that aren't vaccinated but were wearing a mask, if another kid tests positive around them, it now impacts those families. They have to keep their kids at home. And so it's not about just the individual choice until everyone has had that chance to get the vaccine. It's a different conversation at that time and that's a path to potentially having optional masks, right?
What's the excuse if all kids are masked and nobody has a mask?
What was that?
What is the excuse if all of our kids have to wear masks in school, but then, whoo, nobody has a mask?
Right, right. Because the mask, the student, now that's a, now, let me say this. If we start, you know, with individual questions, we'll be here a very long time, but that's a good question. So, because kids could get this at a family gathering, right? Sorry, yeah, I apologize, sorry. So let's say a student got COVID at a family gathering, comes to school, but everyone is wearing a mask. That's your question, right? What would happen?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if that student tests positive, only that student has to quarantine because with masks on both students, now the quarantine rule is a CDC rule. At three feet with universal masking, only the positive student has to quarantine?
Is that actually wrong to have a religious institution that's too long for a mask?
No, because the student that's positive, remember that earlier slide. So when someone's positive, the biggest protection for the group is when the person who's actually positive is wearing the mask. That's why the others don't have to quarantine, because it's the student who is exhaling the virus, that's where the mask stops it. So that's where that rule comes from. It's, this is the quarantine rule, right? So that's how that works. That's why it has an impact, okay? Yeah, we may not believe it, that's, that's the quarantine rule and we have no control over that, okay? Now, this is, I think, what's come up mostly over the last few days and I checked again with our representatives. I talked to Delegate Wilt's office today. So in the last General Assembly session, Senator Donovan wanted to make sure that schools have to bring kids back full time. Really came out of Richmond Public Schools basically remaining closed. We were already in school at that time, two days a week, we then went four days a week. So for us, we were already saying at that time, you know, fall, we expect everyone to be back. But Senator Donovan, at the time, proposed Senate Bill 1303. And at the time, it said, schools will make full-time in-person learning available to all families and it takes effect immediately. So it would have been in March, April, whenever it made it pass the governor. And it passed the Senate and then it went to the House of Delegates. And so then amendments came in. And one of the amendments was that the emergency provision would be cut out. So it would only apply beginning of the 21, 22 school year. But the other provision was that it said, and schools that bring students back shall, which means we have to, do it in accordance with the current, at the time, current guidance from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention. And it's interesting because, and I will say, I was extremely disappointed in how this was handled. Because four weeks ago, we had the Department of Education, we had politicians, the governor, saying, you know what, masks are now a local decision, right? We can't deny that. That was said. However, what likely happened is that no one had paid attention to what they had passed in the General Assembly. And so people started asking, well, wait a second, what happened to Senate Bill 1303? And so we asked legal counsel locally, we asked DOE, and all of a sudden, I actually called DOE from the airport in Reykjavik where I was on vacation last week and said, what's with this language? When we read it, it says, we're supposed to follow CDC guidance. And they said, that is accurate and there will be an updated statement, okay? And so that's why, late last week, we all of a sudden got the message, hey, state law actually requires you to follow CDC guidance. Now, some argue, now Senator Donovan does, but he had the original intent with schools open now, others are saying, no, this is really what it means. So when I, our current information from Richmond and from local counsel is, that's what that means, okay? When the CDC says K through 12, regardless of vaccination status, students and staff should wear masks, that's it. That's what the law requires. Now, some argue that it doesn't, but that's why I called Delegate Wilt's office today and said, what's the process? What's the process to get away from this, hey, it's a local decision because that's convenient at the time, right? And then to say, oh, no, actually, it's law. Because that doesn't help anyone. That's what creates that mood of, well, wait a second, you know, you're just rubbing it in. And that's not what we were trying to do. We were actually, again, like I said earlier, seriously having conversations about, at least at the high school level, talking about optional. But that's the current status. And Delegate Wilt's office said, they are trying to get information from Legislative Services in the General Assembly. So what is it that this really means, right? So that's when we talk about what's a path forward, yeah, that's one of the things we are doing. We're trying to get legal clarification, what that actually means. Because once we get that, then we at least know what our limits are, right? We have to operate within legal limits. And so this is one of those cases where we want to know. Because in an ideal situation, and we also have to remember, there are many schools that are going to open across the country over the next few weeks and many without masks, but we'll also have additional information. We actually open fairly late, right, because we don't open until the fair's over. So we have an advantage of also having good information. And that will help us make decisions based on what the law says, but also at that point we'll know, you know, what happens in other school districts. And, you know, this really didn't help, this process did not help local school districts because we're the ones, you know, who are working through, well, what is the local decision? And then it's boom, here's the law, this is what you have to follow. Augusta County, best example, right? So last week or two weeks ago, they voted to make masks optional. Now, legal counsel, and it's reversed, right? Masks are mandatory in Augusta County for next school year. So it's the same legal parameters. Because what happens is, if a student got sick and we faced a lawsuit and we didn't follow what the current interpretation of the law is, we have no financial protection. It's simple, this is disregard of the law, nothing we can do about it. However, again, we're working with our local delegates to get clarification on what it means, but it would also ask this, you know, when we ask families to send their kids to school, like I said, at the high school level, if we say everyone has had a chance and we don't see the really serious breakthrough infections, can we say to families, you make that choice? We're not opposed to that. We're not opposed to that. But when families haven't had the chance to get their child vaccinated, they haven't had that chance, then we need to at least say, you know what, let's start a timer when that family has had a chance to vaccinate their kid. Whether you vaccinate your child or have your child vaccinated or not, maybe there can be that choice where we say, but at least everyone's had the chance. And then we can move in that direction. So we don't just say, oh, you know what, let's bring the hammer down, masks for everyone. There are legal requirements, but with everything in that pandemic, we have tried to make sure we distinguish serious information, you know, from just people with medical training saying something in a field, like the whole CDC PCR test, yes, someone speaks in front of a school board and says, the CDC is lying. Well, everyone who's looked at that since then has said, it's clear what they're talking about. We have to take serious information into account. And like I said, The Wall Street Journal article, that's serious information and we take it seriously. So whoever posted that, right, yeah, we, we look at that and we look at what that does long-term for us. I have school psychologists to say, there is an impact on kids, right, when we teach reading. So, but we have to operate within the law. And we're looking at these and we're trying to make the best decisions possible, but at this point, at this point, until we hear different from Legislative Services or others, you know, that can make that decision, that's the legal status and it's a good conversation. We need to have it. But at this point, every legal authority I've consulted, that's the current status, right? And that's because of how schools were open in Virginia, they intend to bring everyone back five days a week, which we, you know, we supported that all the way for the new school year, but also then adding during the amendment process that, that families, that we would have to follow CDC guidelines, right? So that's...
Where do you say you come up with the data? This sounds like you came up with it?
No.
That's the all-important data, updating, correcting, and you're supposed to be able to pass and qualify.
That's right. Yeah, no, but that's what, yeah, I understand that, right? Yeah. No, that's the conversation I had with Delegate Wilt's Office today, right? Because the CDC, although the CDC does have the authority, for example, to mandate masks on public transportation, right? They don't really, hold on, yeah, this is a CDC guideline, right? So now, there is no doubt, any attorney that we've checked with, when it says you shall to the maximum, I'll give you an example, because it hinges on that maximum extent practicable. That's the phrase they use. We need to use, the law says that, we need to use what CDC guidelines are to the maximum extent practicable. So CDC says six feet is better than three feet. For us, when we say, can we bring all kids back at six feet? We can't. It's not practicable. Requiring masks is practicable according to the legal authorities that we consult. I'm not an attorney. And so we do ask exactly those questions. What does that mean? Is it really, because otherwise, if it says, well, CDC recommends, there wouldn't have to be a law if the CDC mandates it anyway, because then it's basically federal rules. It's not how it works. And so that's, that's exactly the questions that I ask today and that we ask. And again, that's why Legislative Services in Richmond is going to get involved in clarifying to everyone what this means. It's a good question, right? We asked the same one, right? So, all right. Any questions from the board?
Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Scheichel? Okay. Okay. No board, no questions, board members? Okay. Dr. Scheichel, thank you. Thank you for reaching out to Doc, or to Mr. Wilt's office and talking with Legislative Affairs. We appreciate that. We're going to move on to our next information item, which is the school board meeting schedule for 2022, which, okay.
Board members, you have the proposed school board calendar for next year in your materials. It's very similar to the current year with meetings alternating for business meetings at the Rockingham County Administration Center and that at schools for the second meeting of the month. So we can talk about our educational topics, have our awards for students, for teachers, for staff and for community members, and, you know, have our more traditional school board meetings there. Again, this obviously is one of the exceptions today, but the next board meeting this year will be at Broadway High School. So that would be kind of that second meeting. And so for next year, it's a very similar schedule as this year, only one meeting in June and July because of the summer break, but otherwise alternating between the Administration Center and Rockingham County School. And so that will be for your approval at the next board meeting.
Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Scheichel regarding the school board meeting schedule for next year? Good, okay. Dr. Scheichel, I think that the board members will contact you individually if they have any questions or suggestions or regarding that schedule.
Yes, and please feel free to contact Payne Bocock. She is usually the mastermind of our scheduling for the board meetings. So we've talked, you know, again, about how we want to set this up and then she creates the schedule and she's contacted the county for availability. But I'll gladly answer any questions you may have individually over the next few weeks and then, you know, we'll work with the board clerk to finalize that and again, have for your approval at the next board meeting.
Okay, so that'll come to us at the next board meeting?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Also, board members, in your package, you have the financial review for June 2021 and the year and July 2021 for your review. If you have any questions, I'm sure that you can contact Ms. Mass and she'd be happy to answer any of them. Okay, we're going to move into the public comments section of the meeting. I'm gonna, all of you should have seen or grabbed or seen a copy of the public comments rule for procedure. We have 31 people signed up today. There's a limit of three minutes per person. If you've spoke in the last month or so, we ask that you not speak and you leave, leave the opportunity for another community member to speak. I'd ask that you remember that your comments reflect the character counts pillars, that we, the expectations that we set for our students and our school community. Typically, we have a 30-minute toll, total per meeting. We're going to suspend that tonight unless we feel like this situation is not conducive to a community dialogue. So 30 people, if they take all three minutes, means we'll be here for 90 minutes. I would ask that if you can keep it below three minutes, that would be great. you can keep it below three minutes, that would be great. We have a timer here. You guys did a terrific job. Those that spoke at the last meeting of self-regulating yourselves, and we appreciate that. I also ask that you take the time to think about your thoughts that you're going to share with us. Try not to be redundant, offer new information. You certainly can come up and say, I agree with Speaker XYZ, that's fine. It takes a lot of courage to stand up here and speak before the board on all sides of any issue. And I ask that you not marginalize any speaker that comes before this board tonight. The board will listen to you, and they will hear you. It is a dialogue where you present information to the board. In this setting, you do not usually engage with any dialogue from a board member, although when the board members have their time for highlights later, they may choose to answer questions or to offer suggestions in some of the content that is spoken about. But this is really a one-way opportunity for you to speak to us and for us to listen. Because of the number of people, I'm going to call a name, and then I'm going to call the on-deck person. Because for those of you in the back room, let's kind of reduce the amount of time that we're all here together, so that we can work our way through the list. I would ask that you not cheer, yell. I'm just gonna, let's just take a minute, okay? That you not cheer, that you not yell. If you want to show your support, that's fine. But we want to be able to hear everybody. And I want to remind you that it takes a lot of courage to be up here, and I want to make sure that every speaker is heard. And I'd appreciate your assistance in helping us do that tonight. So the first speaker that I have listed, I should remind you that the clerk takes notes. So when you come to the podium, please pronounce your name. I may not get it right. Sometimes it's hard to read this list. And also, to be helpful to us, if you identify yourself as a parent, a student, an employee, a community member, just helps us gauge the feedback that we're getting. So the first person that has signed up to speak tonight is, I think it's Daria Byler. And then the second person is Todd Matthew.
May I remove my mask? I can't see. Yes. My name is Dana Byler, and my comments relate to the transgender bathroom policy. Try as it might, the state, in quotes, cannot subvert established meaning by deconstructing and reconstructing natural law to fit a new meaning. Natural law isn't malleable. I pray you don't succumb and become, as Lenin called, useful idiots. If we don't stand for something, we'll fall for anything. Our state's ruling regarding the restroom choice by self-identified transgender students reflects its grotesque arrogance in naming you the school board de facto parents. The state, in a recent decision, declared parents have no standing. Since parents have no standing, the school board should prepare to receive phone calls from the real parents asking how to raise what used to be their children. I'm sure no voter believed they were surrendering their rights and responsibilities as parents when electing you. The state's action is the ultimate government intrusion into our lives, undermining parents' belief systems and our Judeo-Christian principles, which are the foundation of our nation. Has the scale and toxicity of our moral decline so desensitized us that we've run into hiding, abandoning our Christian values? Pick up your collective heads, straighten your backbones, fight the temptation to virtual signal, and to conform. Refuse to play the game. Here are questions regarding the Rockingham County Public Schools Policy Manual, which must be addressed before you can thoughtfully consider the state's bathroom transgender guidance. The preamble to each question is, if the state's bathroom transgender guidance was implemented under school board powers and duties, how would you see that the school laws are properly explained, enforced, and observed? Under notification of learning objectives, how would you explain and teach the transgender policy to students with comprehension disabilities? Under acceptable computer system use, how will quote "child pornography" and quote "obscenity" be redefined, given the inevitability of non-transgender students being visually confronted with a transgender student's external sexual organs? How will you redefine the material that the school division deems to be harmful to juveniles? Material that is harmful to minors, and material that is otherwise inappropriate for minors? And finally, how can you endorse and encourage human interaction that achieves the precise same effect as cited in the Rockingham County Public Schools Policy Manual, Virginia Code, for computer access relative to child pornography, obscenity, and materials deemed harmful to juveniles? Based on my personal values as a Christian husband, father, grandfather, and old United States Marine, this is my call to action. Our schools are a primary battleground. We're standing for something. Thank you very much.
Mr. Byler, thank you for your comments. Todd Matthew is speaking now, and then after that is Bain Hi.
My name is Todd Matthew, and I'm a teacher in the Rockingham County Schools. Every person is worthy of dignity and respect and honor and love. I believe this is true because God created each of us. In His image He created us, male and female He created us. What does it mean to love someone? Agreeing with them? Going along with whatever they want to do? Remaining silent when they're on a destructive path? As the media and our society promote and glorify the transgender lifestyle, it's no surprise that some young people are beginning to question their gender. The truth is that trying to become a gender other than your biological sex is not natural, it's not healthy, and if fully carried out, leads people to mutilate their bodies and sexual organs, resulting in permanent infertility. Our public institutions and school systems should not facilitate or encourage this lifestyle, but I fear this is happening. The July 23 press release from the school board was a little vague, so I've tried to connect the dots. It included a statement from Mrs. Reed indicating that discrimination and harassment on the basis of gender and gender identity will be prohibited. It appears that the school board believes that no action or policy changes are needed because current RCPS policies are in line with the proposed transgender policies. So now we're left to wonder, what constitutes discrimination or harassment? As usual, the devil's in the details. The press release did not directly address the concerns that were raised at the last meeting. Does the school division's legal obligation include allowing a transgendered student to use the restroom of the opposite sex? Would prohibiting this be considered discrimination or harassment? I would surely appreciate this if you would, if one of you would very directly and briefly answer those questions. Here's a rhetorical question for you. If the unelected officials at the Virginia Department of Education in Richmond pass a policy that allows students to bring weapons to school, would you support such a policy? Even though the state might require it, hopefully you would reject such a policy because it would interfere with learning and lead to unsafe conditions for students. Well, that's what the citizens of Rockingham County are trying to tell you here. Don't say you have no choice in this matter, or hide behind the notion that the state is going to sue you. No matter which side you choose, there are going to be lawsuits. So I urge you to use common sense and reject this misguided policy. If, if you allow students to use the restroom of the opposite sex, it will not be good for transgender students, much less the rest of the student body. What do you think will happen when word gets out that a biological boy is using the girls' restroom or locker room? How are you going to ensure that he's not teased or harassed? So I urge you, for the good of all students, do not allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew. The next speaker is Bain Hi, followed by Ashley Saunders.
All right, I don't know about that one, guys. Hey, my name is Bain Hi. I use all pronouns, and I'm non-binary. And I graduated Broadway this year. I've been out of the closet publicly for a little over a year, and I'm really proud of that. But I've known for longer, and living and growing up in this county, sorry, and these schools made it really hard for me to accept who I am. And I'm not the only one. I have a handful of friends who are in the LGBTQ community who feel similarly, were put down and denied our identities by our peers and school administration, and most unfortunately, our parents. Supporting trans and queer youth is suicide prevention, straight up. And, but too many people just don't understand this concept for some reason. And I can understand that's kind of hard to understand. I said understand twice. I get that it's not easy for people that don't have any connection to these identities, right? So not everybody has a queer child who can explain it to them. I've heard a lot of older generations complain about transgender concepts being too new and too confusing. And I promise it's not new. And if kids like me and younger can understand it, I know all you can. So if you feel like anything's weird about it in general, just put a little time into research. It, like, it could literally save lives. Learn about puberty blockers.
Please allow Mr. Hi to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Learn about puberty blockers and gender dysphoria. Read about HRT. Ask about queer community members directly. How many of you people know what cisgender even means, right? The Trevor Project, yeah, the Trevor Project, oh my goodness, conducted a survey last year on the mental health of LGBTQ community, like the youth, and they found that 40% of LGBTQ teens have seriously considered suicide in the past year. In the same survey, they found that the number of teens contemplating suicide is cut in half if they're, I lost my place. The number of teens contemplating suicide is cut in half if their identities are respected by all of their support systems, every single one, parents, teachers, everyone. These are the students in this county they're talking about, and everyone else, too. For those that care about this community, please try to help the next generation feel more comfortable in their skin and in their school. That's all. Thanks. Just think about it.
Thank you, Bain. The next speaker is Ashley Saunders, followed by Annette Cashat.
I'm gonna try and move this, sorry, short. My name is Ashley Saunders. I'm a parent of three children in Rockingham County Public Schools. And I'm here to say that policy without enforcement is a empty promise to those that it is supposed to protect. And right now, as it stands, the nondiscrimination policy does not protect trans students. It did not protect my son. But I also want to say to the LGBTQ students of Rockingham County, you are loved. You are needed. You are valuable. And if it is hard to wake up, know that there are many in your community who do not hate you, who do not want you to stop being. Because who you are is enough. You are loved by your peers, you are loved by your teachers, you are loved by a community of people who see you. And if you are in the closet because it is unsafe to come out, you are valid. You deserve to be homecoming king, soccer team captain, hold hands with your spouse, and have every right to have every experience of your hetero-cis classmates. And we will not stop fighting until you have every opportunity, because equity means rights for all. And we will not stop, because you are loved. And high school is not about survival, it is about thriving. And my son barely survived it, and was not allowed to thrive.
I'm sorry.
And I literally want every child, including those who do not agree with me's children, to thrive, to grow, and become real, fully fledged human beings. And that starts at school. Thank you.
I'm going to ask again, that you afford all speakers in this room the courtesy of allowing to say what they have to say, and not interrupt them. Thank you. Ms., Annette Cashat is up, and then followed by Rue Perry, I think. Thank you.
My name is Annette Cashat. I am a parent of children in Rockingham County Schools. First of all, I wanted to thank the school board for thoroughly researching information related to COVID, related to masks, related to the policies put forth. I also encourage them to please enforce policies that are put forth. I also wanted to really say that the words that are spoken here are heard by kids at home. They are talked about. They are definitely hearing when people say things in public comments that are very hateful or incredibly inappropriate to say, things that I would hope they would not say to these children's faces. Non-affirming people, and bullying do affect suicide rates, and they do drive your kids away from you, away from your home, away from faith, and once they're old enough to leave your house, potentially the community. It is also not acceptable to call for violence or aggression at any of the school board meetings or at any of the members. Part of democracy is being able to discuss things, even very heated things, things that we are all very emotional about, but without calling for violence or any type of aggression. I am a Christian, and Matthew 22 does give the commandment to love each other and love God, which also means loving all of His children as they are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cashat. The next speaker is Rue Perry, followed by Jen Jones.
My name is Rue Perry, and as a trans non-binary student who attends this very school, I've been very quiet about my identity to people outside my close friends and family. I've lived in this county since the sixth grade, and I've been lucky to be surrounded by support within my close circle. But the fact that the school board even has to have this conversation on whether or not to give trans individuals basic respect and allow them to use the bathroom that makes them feel the most safe and comfortable, shows that we are far from acceptance within our community. There are children and teens that think of school as an escape from an unsupporting home life, making support from other adults in their life, including teachers, principals, et cetera, that much more important. Not allowing students to feel accepted in a place where they spend 180 days a year for 12 years of their life promotes not only the depression and suicidal ideation of trans students, but also hate and harassment from their peers. And after COVID and quarantine, where 70% of LGBTQ individuals said that they experienced poor mental health, 42% of seriously, seriously considered attempting suicide in the past year, and 48% said that they were unable to receive stable counseling support, said that they were unable to receive stable counseling support from all outlets of their life that are that much more important. Remember to support trans youth in that trans rights to suicide prevention. Thank you.
Thank you, Rue. The next person is Jen Jones, followed by Christine Chus.
Good evening. My name is Jen Jones, and I have the privilege to serve as the Assistant Director of the Shenandoah LGBTQ Center in Stanton. I want to begin my remarks this evening by addressing the dedicated members of the school board, who seek to provide a safe and nurturing environment for the children under their care. The Shenandoah LGBTQ Center is here to help you serve the LGBTQ plus students in your district in ways that will help them thrive privately and academically. Our experience in working with education professionals has taught us that even the most well-intentioned teachers and administrators can inadvertently cause situations which cause transgender students to feel unsafe or unheard. Situations which impede the students' ability to focus on their academic pursuits, and which put them at higher risk than other youth for self-harm. We recognize the importance of ongoing professional development to address unconscious bias and enhance understanding and empathy. and enhance understanding and empathy for transgender students. And we would be more than happy to assist you in training the Rockingham County Schools. But my most important message tonight is not for the adults in this room. Despite my propensity for unabashed gleeful optimism, I recognize I will most likely not change the hearts and minds of many people. Instead, I want to address the LGBTQ plus youth in Rockingham County Schools. We have been lucky enough to meet some of you through our youth groups and at other center events. And many of you are out there feeling alone, unsupported, and scared. Know that we see you, we support you, and we love you. We will do everything in our power to ensure that you thrive. You are loved exactly as you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. The next speaker is Christine Chus, followed by Abby Butler.
It's actually Christine Jones as well.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's a graphic that started floating around social media last year that read, "It shouldn't have to happen to you for it to matter to you." We'll get to why that may sound familiar in a minute, but first, I'm going to do my job, which is to educate, because I am a teacher. The purpose of education is to guide learners to know what they never could have otherwise known. That's our duty as educators. Because the Department of Education is tasked with education, it would be completely irresponsible for them to learn new information and choose not to use that information for the safety of all students, in particular, a very vulnerable group of students who are transgender. What the DOE and so many of us have come to learn through research and data collection is that 48% of transgender youth, as some of my friends have already shared, 17 and under considered suicide this past year, and 20% or 1 in 5 actually attempted it. This is important, because what we've learned is that children in trauma are not available to learn, no matter how hard we want them to be. So they did what we do in education. For literally any group of children, they talked to a wide variety of experts from different fields and expertise and made policies to prevent trauma that can happen in school spaces. Let's approach it another way. For those of you that don't think we have enough transgender students for this to matter, let me frame it this way. So those of you with five children or five grandchildren say, I want you to imagine right now visiting one of them in the hospital in a coma after they've tried to take their own life, and how heartbreaking that would be, because no child's suicide should be okay with anyone in this room. No one's child. The next piece of data I need you to know is that 1 in 10 young people 13 to 18 in the US today identify as LGBTQ, according to data collected by the Williams Institute, which means that statistically speaking, it is a certainty that given the large number of people in this room, some of your children will come out as LGBTQ despite the position you're taking tonight. Or more importantly, they will come out to everyone in their lives except you. Why?
Stop, please.
Because you are sending them the message that they will never be accepted and loved as their authentic selves in your own home. And you know what? That doesn't make me angry at you. That makes me sad for you. Because I don't want any parent to lose relationship with their child, who is precious and beautiful and fearfully and wonderfully made just as they are. Do you know where "It shouldn't have to happen to you for it to matter to you" came from? Jesus!
Our next speaker is Abby Butler, followed by Julie Deal.
My name is Abby, and I am a community member, school board members. First of all, thank you so much for all the hard work you've put into this. What you all do is a thankless job, and I could not do it with nearly the amount of grace that you all have had this summer. This has been painful for all parties involved, but particularly the students. At the end of the day, they are the ones suffering the most during this entire ordeal. Please, I implore you all to stand for the right thing. Thank you all so much for doing the right things with masks. This will save lives. You all have shared, you will not be voting tonight, so I just want to reiterate the importance of these policies. They are not just policy, they are and will be life-changing. Consider some of what we've heard this summer. Trans kids have been compared to dogs, to pedophiles, and contempt to hell, just to name a few, all from community members and family members at these meetings. Kids learn how to treat others first at home. There will be students parroting the hateful things we have all heard this summer. Yes, these policies are suicide prevention, but they mean nothing without diligent enforcement. Please, don't just sit with these policies to pass them. Hold schools accountable to them. For many trans kids, school is their only safe space. Home can be dangerous for many students, especially when they are routinely and regularly told they are wrong, dirty, sinners, confused, or that they are not loved by God. These are all things we have heard this summer. I remember when I was in high school, I too was scared to tell my parents about my gender and sexuality. Home didn't feel safe, so school was my only safe haven. Given what students have been hearing directly from community members this summer alone, I would not be surprised if many students are in the exact same position I was in. I'm sure you all know, but despite what others have been said, this policy is not that people just want to change their gender every day. It's for students that know who they are. It would do more damage to force trans kids to out themselves by going to a nurse or a single-use bathroom, or going into a bathroom they were assigned at birth. I mean, imagine a trans-presenting teenage boy, a teenage boy being forced into the women's restroom, or a teenage girl being forced into the men's restroom. That is dangerous, and that is what will happen if these policies are not upheld. To overlook these policies could and will lead to hospitalization or death. The purpose of these policies are to wholly affirm students, and schools absolutely need to affirm every single student. As a Christian woman, I'm first and foremost called to love and stand for those who are most marginalized. With that said, religion does not belong in school. There is no reason to use religion as a reason to overturn these policies. Thank you so much for your time and dedication.
The next speaker is Julie Deal, followed by Scott McClellan.
Hello, everyone. My name is Julie Deal. I'm a physician assistant, and I'm a mother of four children, two who attend Rockingham County Public Schools and two will attend when they are a little older. I am an ally parent, and we are an ally family. I am speaking on behalf of Cody Saunders, a trans student from Broadway High School, and my friend's son. These are his words. Broadway isn't a safe space for LGBTQ students. I was lied to about policies. Very few teachers stood up for me and other queer students, and classmates are extremely homophobic and transphobic. I have been joked to about killing gay trans people. Sometimes, the F slur is the first thing I hear going into school. All while the sly comments or inappropriate jokes are said, the majority of teachers look the other way. For some teachers, they decided to join in. Every single day, I was misgendered and deadnamed, and nothing changed for all four years. When reporting trans-related harassment to my principal, no change came of it. When I asked about if I could use the men's restroom, I was lied to about the policy. I reached out to teachers, they lacked the power to change anything. I reached out to my principal, and she basically said no to everything and lied to me. I reached out to representatives, and I rarely got responses. It's not fair that some people's school experience is normal, while others have to fight for themselves daily. If you pass policy, make sure it is enforced properly. Also know that you're going to need to earn our trust. I have been lied to, pushed away, and I can't just trust Rockingham's authority after everything. Please protect us.
Thank you, Ms. Deal. The next speaker is Scott McClellan, followed by Shannon Tierney.
All right. My name is Scott McClellan, and I have two students in Rockingham County Schools who are both okay with sharing the same restroom as a transgender girl. I tried having a serious conversation to get their thoughts, but this is not even an issue to them at all. My kids simply don't care what bathroom a transgender student uses. Yet after watching the last school board meeting on the livestream, my kids expressed to me that they do not want to be taught by any anti-LGB teacher this coming school year. They don't tolerate it. Our young kids do not tolerate this, this kind of, yeah, anyway. But anyway, I still wanted to add my thoughts to it. There are a lot of different kinds of Christians out there. There are straight Christians, and there are gay Christians, and there are even transgender Christians. I can imagine for some Christians in this country, their faith in Jesus was all they had to get, their faith in Jesus was all they had to survive the 1,900-mile trip from Honduras to across our Texas border. The point I'm trying to make here is that if God exists, if God exists, God, God probably does not favor any one single group. And those who oppose the new bathroom mandate aren't speaking for all Christians. I believe our constitution is wise to separate church and state, because how can anyone be free if they aren't free from someone else's religion? If a sliver of Christian parents are now facing religious moral dilemmas over the new bathroom mandate, it's up to them to cope with it rather than bully our school board into pushing transgender students back into closets and nurses' offices. Our schools should be a safe place from religious intolerance. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have a minute, please? Thank you. Our speaker now is Shannon Tierney, and the next person up after that is Donnie Owen.
Hello. I am a community cancer surgeon and parent to a Peakview student and a rising freshman at University of Alaska. That's unimportant. I'm here because I want to express, first off, my gratitude to the board and the superintendents, and particularly Dr. Scheckel, that was an amazingly thorough and balanced presentation. I'd like to add to the list of organizations recommending masking for children, the Infectious Disease Society of America and the American Medical Association. Rising above the noise to ensure the safety, physical, and emotional health and future success of our children is honorable and the reason why we appreciate your service. One of the important things that our children are taught are the principles of scientific inquiry. They learn to ask a question, what will happen if? Can we make something better if? They learn to figure out the information they need, what is relevant, what is biased. They collect data. They examine the data critically and derive a conclusion. If the data doesn't fit their preconceived notions, sure, they may check that their study design was strong and valid, but they don't dismiss what they don't want to hear because it is disliked, difficult, different, or divisive. When they know better, they do better, and we can do better. We know that masking has been demonstrated to reduce COVID transmission in communities with high risk, keeping our kids safer, keeping my cancer patients safer, keeping hospital beds available for people having strokes or heart attacks. Right before I came in, there was a news alert that in the entire state of Arkansas, there are only eight ICU beds available right now. We know that acknowledging gender identity and protecting trans kids reduces their likelihood of being victims of violence or suicide. Why would we choose to reject that information when we can use it to save children's lives? Our children's lives, their safety, should be our number one priority. I'd also like to say that the respect we expect from our children, their adherence to the recommendations, to the requests of their teachers, is unfortunately not being modeled in this room tonight.
Dr. Tierney, are you finished or are you gonna?
I'm finished. Thank you.
The next speaker is Donnie Owen, followed by Kirsten Beechey.
I'm Donnie Owen. I'm here on behalf of concerned parents, students, our children, teachers, family and friends. I speak to you on behalf of my Savior, Jesus Christ. Jesus said, "I am the way, the truth, and the life. No one comes to the Father except through Me." Jesus said that the truth will set us free, and I think we need to go to God's Word and trust in God's Word, because God has already said it, and He created us in His image. The Bible says, "For you were all called to be free." Free brothers and sisters, only don't use this freedom as an opportunity for the flesh, but to serve one another through love. For the entire law is fulfilled in one statement, "Love your neighbor as yourself. But if you bite and devour one another, watch out, or you will be consumed by one another." I say then, "Walk by the Spirit," and you will not carry out the desires of the flesh. Do not be deceived. God is not mocked. For whatever a man sows, he will also reap, because the one who sows to the flesh will reap corruption from the flesh, but the one who sows to the Spirit will reap eternal life from the Spirit. So we must not get tired of doing good, for we will reap at the proper time if we do not give up. Therefore, as we have this opportunity, we must work for the good of all, especially for those who belong to the household of faith. And we cannot change each other's minds, nor can we change each other's hearts. Only God in heaven can change our minds and change men and women's hearts and our children's hearts, that they would come to know the truth. As Paul, the apostle, prayed for the people there in Ephesus, he prayed this prayer, and I ask that you join with me in prayer. For this reason, I kneel before the Father, from whom every family in heaven and on earth is named.
Please, please.
For this reason.
Please. Wait a second. Wait.
For this reason, I kneel before the Father, from whom every family in heaven and on earth is named, and I pray that He may grant you according to the riches of His glory, to be strengthened with the power in the inner man through His Spirit, and that the Messiah may dwell in your hearts through faith. And I pray that you, being rooted and firmly established in love, may be able to comprehend with all the saints what is the length and the width and the height and the depth of God's love, and to know the Messiah's love that surpasses knowledge, so that you may be filled with all the fullness of God. Now to Him who is able to do above and beyond all that we ask or think, according to the power that works in us, to Him be the glory in the church and in Christ Jesus for all generations.
Thank you, Mr. Owen.
Forever and ever. Amen.
Okay, we're going to take another minute. Our next speaker is Kirsten Beechey, followed by Stephanie Sorjay.
Good evening. I'm Kirsten Beechey. I'm a parent of two children.
I'm parent of two children in Rockingham County Public Schools. The 1990 American Disabilities Act recognized the rights of people with disabilities to participate fully in society, and as a side effect made America more accessible, kind, and humane for those of us who are currently non-disabled. As a mother of young twins, I learned the value of elevators, and ramps, and automatic doors. And because of the ADA, my own daughter, who has Down Syndrome, has a right to a free and appropriate education in the least restrictive environment. Her academic options aren't predetermined by the composition of her chromosomes, but by her unique needs and abilities. The teachers and administrators we have worked with in Rockingham County Public Schools have been phenomenal, including her in the classroom with full support, and I bring my gratitude today for that. They support her in being the best learner she can be in a safe and accepting environment, and she is thriving. During the past year of virtual school, I had a front-row seat to see the hard work, innovation, and compassion these educators brought to a challenging job of teaching and delivering services during a pandemic. My children are coming back in person this fall in spite of the risks. We have seen the hard work that this board and this superintendent did to keep everyone safe this year. I have confidence in your leadership for the coming year. Inclusion takes work, but it's good for everyone. The issues before us tonight have to do with fair access and inclusion. Masking very simply allows my daughter, who is 10 times more likely than the average child to have complications from COVID, it allows her to return to the classroom. Policies that prevent discrimination against our trans children and youth and preserve their privacy support them in being the best learners they can be in safe environments. When we work at seeing and protecting these unique groups of children, we develop policies and procedures that will benefit all of our students. To the trans youth who are working for full inclusion today, we see you, we hear you, we love you, and we support you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Beechey. Our next speaker is Stephanie Sorja, followed by George Williams.
Thank you. My name is Stephanie Sorja, and while my children are elementary school students in the Harrisonburg School System, as the pastor of Trinity Presbyterian Church, members of my church include current students, parents, and faculty within the Rockingham County Public School System. Believe it or not, it took going to seminary for me to learn some basic biology. Biological sex is not binary. Not everyone fits into the categories of XX or XY in terms of chromosomes. In fact, there's XXY, XY, YXX, for example. There are other biological realities that show us sex is not an either-or, and studies show that 2% to 3% of people are born not male or female. Statistically speaking, that would include more than a handful of individuals in this room right now. What happens is that a binary is assigned at birth, not according to the diversity what God has created, but according to the forms that have just two boxes, one of which must be checked. So the mistake is a human administrative one, not divine. As a Christian minister of the gospel, I look at the diversity of God's creation, and I see that God created not just night and day, but also dusk and dawn, not just land and sea, but also streams and wetlands and glaciers. And science can now show us that God created not just male and female, but a greater diversity of biological sex and expansion of understandings of gender.
Can we please... I mean, seriously, I've asked like 10 times. I've asked you to respect each speaker. Each speaker has a different opinion, and each speaker will be given the opportunity to speak. I would ask that you not continue to speak out. That's the only way we're gonna get through this tonight, and the only way we can continue. I know there's a lot of passion in this room. I get it. But I'm asking you to please show each speaker the opportunity to share what they want to share, whether you agree with it or not. Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Each and every one of these children is a beloved child of God, just as they have been created. And the Bible also tells me that God's constant concern is for the most vulnerable among us. Throughout the Bible, God's people and followers of Jesus are told to take greater responsibility for the members of the community who need more care. And in this time, that means we need more protections for LGBTQ+ students and for trans or gender non-conforming students in particular. I urge the school board to step up to this charge for the sake of these beloved children. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is George Williams, followed by Andrea Spitzer. Mr. Williams?
My name is George Williams. I've been a long-term resident of this county, and I fall upon the words of my father, who had been through all of World War II. He said, "If we are to understand one another, we have to hear one another and not run from a differing opinion." People who run from a differing opinion never learn anything. Now, I have a question to ask the board. I was given information that this school board attended the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative. Rockingham County's logo is on this, along with Fairfax County, Virginia Beach, Albemarle. And I'm curious, did we participate actually, or is this just information that's misinformation that's been sent to me? I would love it if one of the board members would respond to me on this. You can catch me privately at any time. I'm easy to find. And I want to know because this is an educational background for CRT, Critical Race Theory. And Critical Race Theory goes against everything constitutionally I believe in. And to be perfectly honest, I think everybody's covering a lot of topics, but I want to know this: Is Rockingham County School going to create some sort of specialized diversity program that doesn't actually say Critical Race Theory, or hide it under some new terminology, create an ambassador for the concept? Because I look at these nations who have had communist socialist backgrounds and their abstract failures. And that's a fact. It's not debatable. Every time communism has been tried in any nation, it failed miserably, and the people suffered. Venezuela is an excellent example, a nation that was very rich, and then, poof, people are digging food out of trash cans. I want to know what my school board here is educating our children with. And equally, I want to know something else. When did we start deciding that 10, 15-year-olds know how to do anything? Because frankly, when I went to the Army, I had to learn how to do things because, to be perfectly honest, 19-years-old, I didn't know how to do jack. And finally, this thing here. Yeah, I heard you. Whoever. Thank you. I'm good with that. I'm willing to hear you. Are you willing to hear me?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Williams. The next speaker is Andrea Spitzer, followed by, I think it's Mark Flanders.
Stick around for school board comments. This might just come up.
Go ahead, Ms. Spitzer.
Okay. I'm gonna take my mask off because this is what freedom is. Good evening, Rockingham County School Board members, parents, and grandparents. My name is Andrea Spitzer, and I am a mother with children in the county schools and an administrator on Facebook group called Parents of Rockingham County Public Schools. I'm telling you tonight, unmask our children. Our constitutional rights are being stomped on. Most of the parents are like I am and won't let this happen to our children. The transgender opposite-sex thing is a sin, and it is just total wrong. Why aren't you people on the school board siding with the major majority in God over this unjust sin, but you just are siding to allow a person who don't know what sex they are in the bathrooms and locker rooms with normal-sex children? It seems like the transgender is a very small part of the school attendance and needs special classes with other kids that don't know what their sex are. Maybe the answer is some mental help to figure out what sex the group is. Now, the Critical Race Theory is just another socialist idea. Why in the world would you want my kids telling themselves they aren't good as a different-color child? Well, you can forget that because my kids and most parents here tonight will agree. Our kids are as important as any kid. Rockingham County, I can't believe you would stoop so low. How about you enforce teaching history like they have been before the illegal tearing down of history? Teach our children to write in cursive and math. Why do you want our kids hating each other? Also, when you try to take away rights as a parent and say it's up to the principals if they want to get the police or parents involved, or maybe an sexual assault or other, never, ever, I say to you, "I will close with stop with the socialist brainwashing of my children and put God back in schools." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Spitzer. The next speaker is Mark Flanders, followed by Amanda Hughes.
Thank you. My name is Mark Flanders. I'm a father of seven children, four of which are currently enrolled in the Rockingham County Schools, with emphasis on the currently. I rise today to speak not just about masks and the transgender policy, I rise to talk about parental rights. As parents, we have a moral obligation and a legal right to raise our children as we see fit. We are the experts on our kids. We are charged with making the medical decisions for our children. We must look out for their mental health, and it is up to us as parents to instill morals and values in our children. It is not your job or right to take any of those roles from us. I will not abdicate the right and responsibilities to the governor, or any politician, or to the school board, or Dr. Scheickel. Therefore, I will not comply with any so-called mandate or policy that infringes on my parental rights. Now, I have to say that I am saddened by how some people on the other side of some of these issues have been treated tonight. I agree that every child is a child of God. I agree that schools should be safe from religious intolerance, but that includes intolerance of my religion. I agree that all kids should be loved. No kid should be bullied or coerced. Schools should be a safe and inclusive environment for all children, and that includes mine. I certainly don't want trans kids to be bullied or belittled. It is not their fault that they have been misled to believe that they can and should try to change their gender, and that if the rest of us would only play along, that they would be happy. That is not true. That will not make them happy, and I will not play along, nor will my children. I read the press release from July 23rd. Frankly, it was a bunch of word salad and buzzwords that told us nothing about the actual policy. I was left with more questions than answers. Dr. Scheickel, you and I had a conversation earlier this year, and I asked you two questions: Will biological boys be allowed to be in the bathroom with my daughter? And will children be told that they have to deny their most deeply-held beliefs and use so-called preferred pronouns? You told me no to both of those answers. You said repeatedly, "Safe and inclusive means for everyone, including my child." You said it several times. I would like you to answer those questions specifically. Will a boy be allowed in the bathroom with my daughter? And will my child be required to use pronouns that disagree with their deepest-held beliefs? I will not comply with policies that take away my parental rights.
Thank you, Mr. Flanders. Next up is Amanda Hughes, followed by Steve Davis.
Hi, my name is Amanda Hughes. I'm speaking as a parent, school board members, and Dr. Scheickel. While there are many important topics that call for comments this evening, with a three-minute time limit, I will focus on the potential changes related to transgender students and bathroom usage. While what a student who is not my child chooses to think about themselves when it comes to gender is none of my business, I do have a concern, and it is my business, when the behavior of that student could affect the safety of other students in the school system. I'm specifically talking about the possibility that students with biologically male-bodied parts could use female restrooms and locker rooms, as this provides a safety concern for the general student population. While the July 23rd email from Dr. Scheickel and Ms. Reed state this board plans to make no changes related to the current policies that you have in place, I don't know that information will hold true in the future, and the press release regarding the transgender discussion did not provide the current policies on the issue. When I searched for RCPS policies with the words transgender, the two policies that appear in the search don't mention restrooms or bathrooms. I have two daughters who will both be in middle school this coming year. One of them heard about these transgender policies from friends. She was very concerned. While I told her that if she ever experienced such a situation, she had every right to do whatever she needed to do to protect herself, and I would support her. Her resolution was that she would just hold her bladder for the entire school day and not use the bathroom. While I explained there were better resolutions to deal with the situation if it arose, your inability to quickly respond to these issues when they were first published and to be transparent with your response is already causing unnecessary stress on the students of Rockingham County Schools. In the current RCPS Parent-Student Handbook, you have a section entitled Code of Responsible Student Conduct. Within that section, it states, "Educators have three major responsibilities for children under their care: to instruct, to supervise, and to provide for student safety. Allowing students to use bathrooms not of their biological gender..." Allowing students to use bathrooms not of their biological gender is not providing for student safety. Multiple studies have shown that students must first feel safe in order for learning to occur. Students will not be able to effectively learn if they are constantly worried about performing the basic bodily function of using the restroom during the school day. I know there are other resolutions to solve this problem, such as letting certain students use existing single-use staff or student bathrooms. Please think of the safety of students when making decisions on transgender bathroom policy, and please be transparent when decisions have been made."
Thank you, Ms. Hughes. Our next speaker is Steve Davis, followed by Tina Carnes.
My name is Steve Davis. I graduated with Lowell Falk in 1976, which seems like 100 years ago, but it wasn't really. We graduated on the 200th anniversary of America and the freedoms that were being relinquished. And so, we celebrate that every Fourth of July, and I'm really grateful for that. But I came tonight because I want to speak as a husband, as a father, and as a grandfather. And I am having really a hard time deciding. The superintendent told us about masking, and what we're gonna do is follow the state mandate, the CDC. Okay. So, the state law is transgenders have to have bathroom facilities. So, why are we even having discussion now if that's what we're gonna do? I think my problem is that, south of us in Augusta County, the school board there unanimously decided not to follow the guidelines of the state. North of us in Shenandoah County, they encountered the same problem about two years ago, and they're not even having this issue. They're not even talking about this issue. I think, I don't know if this is really a transgender bathroom issue for me. For me, this is an issue about having penises in vagina bathrooms or in locker rooms. I don't understand it. I don't, that's pretty blunt, I realize. But it's point-blank. I don't want my wife, my daughters, or my granddaughters in situations where they would be compromised. I realize that you're between a rock and a hard place. I realize that counties on both sides of us have made bold decisions. So can you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. The next speaker is Tina Carnes, followed by Amanda Ritchie.
Hello, my name is Tina Carnes, and I do have a child in the Rockingham County School District. I have had great experiences with the teachers and the principals in her schools, and I am grateful for that. I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak this evening, and I don't have a speech planned, but I am a concerned parent. What I'm concerned about is the safety of my child, her worried about the bathrooms that she is going to be using, and the things that she's going to be taught that are going to be against everything that I've tried to teach her. My concerns also are for teachers who are caught between their belief system and what they're told. I know several, and I have friends, who have stepped down from their teaching positions because of the pressure that has been applied to them, and they cannot mentally and emotionally continue in what they feel they are being coerced into doing. So, my concern here is a heart issue. What is in our hearts, and what is in my heart and the parents that are here, every one of you, is for our children. That is what is in God's heart. And I feel that there has been an increase, yes, in depression and anxiety because they've been separated from their family and their friends because of this COVID thing. They've had their voices restricted, their breathing restricted. And when depression and anxiety comes in, it's because our spirit and our physical man is at war with one another. We know who we are created to be internally, but when we are trying to tell our kids something completely different or allowing them to choose for themselves instead of going by the Word of God, there is going to be repercussions. There is going to be emotional issues that come from that. They need to have safe places, yes, regardless, but we need to give them truth. And that's what I pray. I pray for a spirit of wisdom and revelation for the hearts of the people here in every issue, and I pray that you have boldness and strength to do what is right for all children, not the minority.
Thank you, Ms. Carnes. The next speaker is Amanda Ritchie, followed by Chuck Dubay.
Hi, I'm Amanda Ritchie, and I am a parent in Rockingham County. I want to begin tonight by encouraging us to remember that all of our students are deserving of a safe educational environment. And as adults, we are setting an example here on how to approach controversial issues with love and respect for our neighbors. That said, it is not okay that our children are being used as pawns in a political game that our leaders are using to divide our communities. This past year has been a caution to be acutely aware of what our public schools, and by extension, our government systems are doing. Our schools have moved away from the core goals of educating students in a traditional subject and toward promoting political ideologies that may or may not be consistent with those nurtured within individual family units. Many of the policies our schools are trending toward exemplify a terrifying overreach of the public education system, and this is something that all parents should fight against. To my point, I have read the Virginia Department of Education transgender model policy in its entirety. I have outlined the reasons I oppose this policy in a lengthy email to the school board dated July 22nd, to which no one on this board bothered to respond. Given my limited time here, I won't go into detail, but in it, I referenced direct quotes taken from the model policy that demonstrate egregious limitations of parental and family rights and subsequent expansion of government authority. As to the bathroom-changing room access issue, I suggested that there are compromises that can be made to ensure that transgender students feel welcomed and accommodated by the school. But I do not believe that stamping out the comfort, privacy, and safety of other students is the right way to do this. To that end, one possibility would be to provide single-use bathrooms and changing spaces in schools that are available to all students. It seems that this would please both sides by allowing transgender students the spaces they need while also ensuring the safety and privacy of all students. Fortunately, it seems like the school system will have the funds to do this. A July 10, 2021 article in the DNR cites that RCPS is expecting another $10.8 million in COVID relief from the government in addition to the $6.2 million they have already received. According to the article, the school system has not determined where this funding would go. Given the school board's commitment to inclusivity and the safety of all students, why not allocate some of this money toward renovations that include private bathrooms and changing spaces that can be made available to every student? This extra funding would go a long way. Okay. I just wanted to say that I want every child to have a safe and productive experience, but I don't believe the model policy allows that.
Thank you, Ms. Ritchie. The next speaker is Chuck Dubay, and I apologize.
That's okay, Mrs. Ritchie.
And Chelsea Wine. Is that correct?
Yeah. Chuck Dubey.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm kidding.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Chuck Dubey, and I'm a dad of a rising first grader and second grader at Cub Run Elementary School. We love Mr. Boyers. He's awesome. Both of my kids, who also wear glasses, had health issues this past year while wearing a mask. We spoke with their ophthalmologist, who is in Charlottesville, and he said he's seen a lot of kids with eye infections due to the masks, and they've also had issues with their glasses fogging up. So, as a concerned dad for my kids' physical and mental health, I'm asking the board to provide a medical mask exemption. While I would like if the parents had the option to choose whether their kids wear a mask, I understand the governor has made some recent decisions to mandate across. Also, I would ask that the board would consider making masks optional for outdoors, classes, and recesses because my kids would come home saying they still had to wear a mask while out on the playground. So, I looked over if the CDC is kind of your guiding principle, your handbook. I read on their website that they recognize there are specific instances when wearing a mask may not be feasible. This is pulled directly from the website. In these instances, consider abaptions and alternatives. Because of that statement, I believe one of a great adaption or alternative for my kids, and I can only speak for my two kids who are at Cub Run, that if a kid cannot wear a mask because of a medical condition, consider taking an alternate route, such as checking their temperature or do a wellness check. Thank you so much for hearing me.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chelsea Wine, followed by Molly Baumann.
Good afternoon. I'm a parent in the Rockingham County School System. Can you hear me? Okay. I'm saddened to be here making this statement this evening. There was a comment from our board member in the Daily News Record, and as the comment goes, "Boys would not be using the girls' bathrooms," later clarifying that it is about the definition of "boy." "The definition of boy is a male child or a young man. Characteristics of a male, including reproductive organs, are completely different from that of a female. Why in a public school can my daughter sit in a family life or biology class, learn the obvious differences, and then walk into her locker room and see a male? It is immoral. It seems this 21-22 school year, transgender students are the only ones with a choice. You are not allowing choice of face masks within our school. The CDC has no authority to make laws, and as you can find on their website, cdc.gov/coronavirus, you can see that the statement "CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students. Recommendations are not laws nor requirements." Students in Shenandoah County today participated in walkout to protest the masks. I applaud and I support them, the same as I will applaud and I will support the students in Rockingham. As elected officials of the board, your job is not meant to be easy, desired after, or highly paid as it is the job of a public servant, meant to represent the will of the people. Over the past few weeks, the will of the majority has been made clear. And I do apologize because we have been asleep and we have been ignorant to the topics going on in our school. But now, we are awake and we are moving, and you're catching the brunt of it. Our children will no longer be used as pawns in the political liberal agenda. It ends this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wine. The next speaker is Molly Baumann, followed by Calvin Lambert.
Hi, I'm Molly Baumann. Even though there will be no vote on masks today because of our governor, I'd like to share some points in hopes that the masks are done differently this upcoming year. COVID-19 is definitely a risk to some folks. There's no doubt about that. But for the majority of us, we will survive. According to the CDC, there have been 336 deaths related to COVID-19 for children under 18 years old. All of these deaths had underlying conditions. COVID deaths so low in children, yet the suicide rates in our children has increased significantly due to masking and social isolation. My daughter goes to Mountain View. She loved it, despite the fact that she had to wear her mask most of the seven hours a day. They even wore their mask when doing physical activity or playing and running around outside. Even adults were allowed to take off their masks to exercise. You are literally depriving my daughter of oxygen, which is a very serious health risk. During masks breaks, including lunch, she could not talk. Still being six feet apart from her friends, she could not talk with her mask down. What kind of a message are we sending our kids? Your voice doesn't matter? You will do what authority says and be conditioned at this young age to do what is expected from your government, your teachers, your doctors? This is not an environment I want my child to get used to. I will not send my child into a school like this. We started out with lockdowns, and then shortly after that, we were told to wear masks to slow the spread of the virus and not overwhelm the hospitals. But look at us now. Over a year later, we are still with restrictions, still masking our children, and now being encouraged to mask up again, all without any science to show us what we're doing makes any sense at all. Stand for Health Freedom is an incredible resource for finding the data and science behind masks. I encourage parents to check it out. Stand for Health Freedom and see what masks are actually doing to our children. The number of deaths associated with children under 18 years old is incredibly low, and many doctors and scientists have said that children do not transmit this virus. Even if you do not believe this, the choice should be ours to make. We are the parents. We are the United States of America. We are the land of the free. Our children deserve for us to fight for this. We should have the choice to wear or not to wear a mask. We should have the medical freedom to say, "No, I don't want to be a part of your experiments." If we don't, I believe this will continue. Our children are depending on us, and I hope when the time comes that the governor is no longer infringing on our rights, that the members of the school board will stand with us. I'd like to end with this powerful statement. It is my duty as a parent to research and question everything for the sake of my children, not blindly trust. Doctors are not the authority. Teachers are not the authority. The government is not the authority. I am.
Thank you, Ms. Baumann. The next speaker is Calvin Lambert, followed by Elvin Shelton.
Good evening, board members and those in attendance. My name is Calvin Lambert. I will retire from active-duty military on 1 September 2021, following a 27-year military career that has given me the opportunity to live and travel all over the world. In all my travels, I always knew that I would return here to Rockingham County because this is where I wanted to raise my kids. I came back here for the family values and the people here. I am married and a father to five beautiful daughters, Kira nine, Kylie seven, Kalia six, CT and Carly, twin four-year-old girls. Nothing is more important to me than their safety and raising them to respect others. One of the greatest authors of this great nation once wrote, "All will bear in mind this sacred principle that though the will of the majority is in all cases to prevail, that will to be rightful must be reasonable." That author, you ask? Same author of the Declaration of Independence, Thomas Jefferson. So, I now ask of you, is it unreasonable for my daughters to be able to use a restroom with people of her own gender? What happens when they are required to shower after gym? Are we gonna expect them to share the same restrooms and showers? Our nation was built upon the fundamental of majority rules. That is, after- That is, after all, what our elected officials are supposed to represent, the majority opinion of their people. According to a study conducted by UCLA, 0.7% of youth identify as transgender. So if the majority of people are opposed to gender-sharing bathrooms, then are we really going to go with the minority, 0.7%? Where are the rights of the majority? Why must we impose rules that offend the majority just to appease the minority? Now, I could care less if you identify as a male, female, a train, a tree, whatever you want to identify as. Everyone is free to be whatever they choose to be. But where I draw the line is allowing just anyone to use the same restrooms as my daughters. What happened to my kids' rights? What is wrong with having three different bathrooms? Girls, boys, and whatever you choose to name the third?
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. The next person to speak is Alvin Shelton, followed by Patrick Fritz.
Alrighty. I am a father of two graduates from this wonderful county. I have a third son who is starting eighth grade this year, and I have a granddaughter who will be coming up in the system. And listening to these debates and the bickering, the back and forth between different points of view, as I observe tonight, is trying to form exactly what to say. I hope you all, because you all have, as a school system, have been wonderful to our older children, really helped us out, but I hope you will really listen to the parents here, because the parents are speaking to you in regards to their children. And you're given the opportunity as part of the school system with some of the greatest care in the world, caring for someone else's child, but when it comes to certain issues like transgender, CRT, and so forth, these things, in my opinion, should not be taught in school. I'm just going to give you an example. You agree with me, disagree with me, it's okay. If you go through a surgery, one of the surgeries, and you have a prostate, do they remove the prostate? Because there's more than the obvious parts that designate someone male or designate someone as female. That's the first thing, and I've got limited time, so just throw it out there. The answer is no, the prostate stays there, so you're still a male. And that's where someone earlier said, "The truth will make you free." Jesus said that if you come to Him, He will really free your soul and your mind and give you a life that is full of just enjoyment and peace and tranquility. It's what a lot of people are looking for. But then the final thing, I've got less than a minute, is this CRT, because I want to hit them both. And I want to hit this one because it's close to home. My brother-in-law's black, and I love my brother-in-law, and he loves me. So this whole disparity, he and my sister talked to me about one of his family members basically coming in and spouting off the CRT agenda, and it was said to me, "I had to stop this, because all at once my wife is being looked at as if she could possibly be racist and she's married to me." Now, there's some things that are common sense, and common sense is getting thrown away, and I charge you folks to stand up for the parents and the people here and do the right things, and that's to protect the children.
Thank you, Mr. Shelton. Our next speaker is Patrick Fritz.
Hey, good evening, y'all. My name is Patrick Fritz, I'm a parent of three students in the Rockingham County Public School System, and I've got a fourth one coming up through. First thing I wanted to say tonight is thank you very much for your courage in standing up here and facing down this crowd. I understand that there's been a lot of death threats, there have been a lot of threats against your physical safety over the last couple of weeks since the last meeting and with these things coming up. So keep doing what you're doing, it's an incredibly brave thing, and I'm proud of you and the stand that you're making. Second, I just wanted to say, I actually just came to hear about the air handler at Turner Ashby, but apparently there's other things on people's mind. So I'm going to bring up just a couple of things here, right? Because ultimately here, what everybody's talking about is kids, 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 and I get it, right? But what they're doing is they're splitting the difference on, oh, well, this is an acceptable number of students that can die. This is an acceptable number of students that can kill themselves, this is an acceptable number of students that can die of COVID, this is my right, this is your right, this... Look, right? I find a delicious irony, right? In the fact that people are going to come up here and lecture somebody on rights and the role of the school board and the role of the government when they haven't actually read the 1,485 words that are in the Constitution of the United States of America and understand how it works. And understand how it works and how the laws flow down through this country. We are still not allowed to discriminate against people, right? Not discriminating against people does not take your rights away. Not discriminating against people does not take your rights away. What it does is make sure that we all have equal rights. I respect your religion, I think it's kind of cockamamie, I think it's whatever, but I respect it. That's on you. I do remember my Southern Baptist upbringing, though, and that song that we sang every week in church. "Jesus loves the little children, all the little children of the world, red and yellow, black and white, gay, trans, straight and bi. They are all precious in His sight. Jesus loves the little children of the world." And I also remember that pastor standing up there saying, "Quit talking about the speck in your brother's eye and take the plank out of your own. Take the plank out of your own. You are sitting here talking about children. You have spent the last two hours and 10 minutes dehumanizing children. You all should be ashamed of yourselves. Not a single one of you have stood up here and represented American values." School board, I appreciate your job, I appreciate what you have to do, right? But the one thing I do want to say is regardless of what you feel about me, regardless of what you feel about my friends, regardless of what you feel about these children, this is our county too. This is our town too, and you do not get to tell us that we don't belong here.
Mr. Fritz, your time is up. Your time is up. That concludes our public comments for this evening. We're going to move into board member comments and highlights. Can I have the floor? Thank you. First is Mr. Falk.
Thank you, Chair Reed, I'll pass.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. McQuilkin?
This evening, I would like to begin with two highlights. The first is the summer graduation that was held at East Rockingham High School. I witnessed 56 students graduating. It was a wonderful sight. The students were elated, their parents were cheering. This is what we do, we educate children. And 56 more graduated from our schools, our Rockingham County schools. My second highlight is that I attended the meeting where the custodians received their training. Every year, they receive an annual training on cleanliness and sanitizing buildings. This past year has been absolutely phenomenal for them, because they have worked and worked and worked and worked to make sure that our buildings and all surfaces are as clean as they possibly could be, and they have done an outstanding job. Thank you, yes, they do deserve applause. I mentioned that I've been to other school divisions, and I don't see any other school divisions who have facilities that are as clean and well-kept as ours, and one of the speakers even seconded that. So we need to take our hats off to the custodians.
Can you please put your mask until you speak?
I will try to bring the microphone a little closer, is that better? I hope so. The third thing I have to say is, because we live in a democracy, everyone this evening has been able to come here and speak, and for that, we are glad to be able to have a democracy where everybody feels free to come and express their opinions in a respectful way. Thank you all.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Breeden?
Two of the highlights that I've had this past week is that I've actually had an opportunity to speak with two of the speakers from our last meeting, both from opposing sides of this issue. I spent almost two hours with both of them individually, and I was surprised at how much we had in common. I don't know why I should have been surprised, we all come from the same county, we all grew up in the same place, but we had quite a bit in common. And I think the issue, at least for me, moving forward, is determining how we enact policy fairly and consistently that does protect everyone from both perspectives. And to that end, I would hope that we are able to establish a community input committee that will work with us in deciding how that goes. It has to be done fairly, equitably, and be sensitive to all points of view. And that's what we've got to do. Now, as I said to both of those folks that I spoke with, CRT is not going to be taught in our schools. And I'm going to be asking Dr. Scheichl here in just a little bit, he's going to provide an explanation on the conference that was alluded to earlier. We've already had that discussion. Now, the last thing I would say is that, you know, we all do come from the same place, really. I mean, we all run our, well, most of us work, raise our families, you know. My kids have gone through the school system, I've got a granddaughter who'll be a first grader. Anybody that thinks that I would vote for a policy that I knowingly, that I know would put her in jeopardy, they don't know me very well. And so, but having said that, I said to one of the people that I met with this week, "Let's start at a basic premise." And I said, "If a kid walked through that door right now that you or I knew nothing about, we didn't know their parents, we didn't know where they came from, we didn't know what church, if any, they attended, does that child deserve an education that's free from harassment and bully and equal opportunity?" And they said, "Yes." And I said, "Then that's what our policy says, and enforcing that is the key." And so I just asked, "Your continued dialogue, respectful dialogue, I'm willing to sit and talk with anyone. I'm not willing to sit and yell back and forth, but I'm willing to sit and talk with anyone that would be inclined to do so." We've addressed a lot of difficult issues in 20-some years in Rockingham County, I see no reason why we can't address this one.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Scheichl?
Yeah, one quick comment about masks. Mr. Dubey is still here? He asked about masks outside, so there is no mask requirement outside. So at the elementary schools, you know, as students are outside, there's no masking requirement, and that's also in the CDC guidance. So that's certainly a change from last year because of the much lower transmissibility of the virus outside, particularly because of airflow. The question is, was it Mr. Williams, still here? Okay. He asked about the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative. So it's actually a really good question. I received that question via email from a parent who served in the military, and she was worried that what she had read online on a site called The Federalist indicated that these school districts were involved in this Virginia Inquiry Collaborative, and that now that would lead to the teaching of really divisive issues in buildings. And we had a really good back and forth, and I said, you know, "These are important questions to ask, and oftentimes, you know, we basically are lumped together with whatever other school divisions may have posted." And so there is a good explanation for the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative. Social studies oftentimes is simply focused on memorizing stuff from the textbook. And we know that many students do better and get a better grasp of history when they can be part of inquiry using serious research methods, using source documents on a topic that they are interested in. I'll give you one example that wasn't related to the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative, but at East Rockingham High School, you know, located out in Elkton, students did a project about the creation of the National Park in Skyline Drive, and how that process may explain some of the feelings toward park rangers, towards the federal government, because many families, when Skyline Drive was built, were pushed out of the mountains and lost their property and had to leave that area. And to those students, that means a lot, that's their grandparents, you know, that's in many cases their relatives. And so when you learn about it that way, you just get a really good understanding of local history and what affects you personally, and you can then put that into a greater context. And so the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative was a conference where a professor from NC State came to Virginia who has been, you know, supporting this inquiry design model. It simply means that students should be allowed to research topics of interest to them and use a rigorous method to do so. And so there was a conference, and seven school districts, I believe, participated in it, and we were one school district. But what happened as a result was that school districts were asked to then post three inquiries that they would think are appropriate for their students. And so when someone visited the website, there were inquiries posted by other school districts that, yeah, people had an issue with. And in order to explain to you what Mr. Breeden said, you know, that CRT is not a topic for high school students, and that this is simply bunching other concepts together to make that point that somehow we are part of this, I will tell you what the three inquiries are that Rockingham County submitted to that group to be posted, and I think you get the idea that this has nothing to do with CRT. So the three topics for Rockingham County were, what was the light that came out of the Dark Ages? What is the greatest obstacle to Kurdish independence in the Iraq and Turkey area? And third, what is the role of women to lead democratic movements in South America? Those were the three inquiries that Rockingham County contributed. So if you ask whether we were part of the Virginia Inquiry Collaborative, yes, we were, but those are the topics that we worked on. And so I think that gives you a good sense that we look to make social studies interesting to students on topic that they find interesting. For example, the question about Kurds came about by a student who had fled that part of the world with their family. And when they came here, because everyone simply knew it was somewhere in the Middle East, that student was constantly called a terrorist, you know, you're this, you're that. And that student said, "Why is there this misunderstanding?" And so he actually came up with the idea to study the issue that the Kurds face in southern Turkey, in northern Iraq. We, you know, first Gulf War, we all, you know, are familiar with what happened there after the war. And so that's the point to make, that students want to involve topics that they deeply care about. And so that's what the collaborative was and has nothing to do with CRT. And so that's what the collaborative was and has nothing to do with CRT. So it's a good question. Please ask those when you have concerns because it's the only way we can explain it. Okay? Honestly, I don't have an answer for you on that. I don't know. It's... One of the reasons it's not taught in high school is because it's a concept that's typically taught in graduate schools and law schools. If it's not appropriate for high schools, it is absolutely not appropriate for middle school and even less so in elementary schools. And that... Yeah, no, that's... I can get... Now, if the question is, is history class still going to talk about slavery? Of course it is. That's state standard. That's American history, right? But I don't think we're having objections to that, to talk about American history. So that's, I think, again, yeah, I'm glad you ask these questions because so many times... And I understand it. Someone goes to that website, sees the inquiries that are posted, and is like, whoa, what's this? Right? But that's not what we're doing. We're trying to make this work for students so that they don't just memorize the same old stuff that we always memorize in history class. There is more to it. And when students can become their own researchers with serious methods and serious sources that are navigated, you know, match the state standards, I think then history can just, you know, become a little bit more life for students, and that's the idea there. But I'm glad that question was asked because it allows us to clarify it. And that's why Mr. Breeden already knew I was going to talk about that because it's a question he had received and I had received from others. And again, the parent that I had that conversation with, and she said the same thing. It's good to know. I'm glad I asked because it really bothered her, and that's just how that works. So thank you for the question.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichl. I heard her ask a question. Can I... Can... Do you know... Wait a second. Wait a second. Wait a second. Thank you. I under... I under... I understand. Can you give me a second, please? I understand, and I believe that Dr. Scheichl... If I... Correct me if I'm not right, Dr. Scheichl, that if people have questions when we finish our meeting, that he would be happy to answer those for them. We have... I'm sorry. We have other business that we need to attend to tonight on top of what we've done. We've allowed all of the speakers tonight to speak, which was beyond the typical 30 minutes that we allow. We gave everyone their full 30 minutes, three minutes, and I know that almost all the speakers used the full 30 minutes. My mic keeps going out. So as typically happens with the board, what we will do is Dr. Scheichl will be available after the board meeting. If you have questions, you can email his office. He has been responding. What I can tell you about emails is if they're disrespectful, chances are you're not going to get a response. And I'm gonna... I'm not... I'm... You know what? We're not going to go there. We're going to move on to action items. And the first... I'm sorry.
You know, my... My... All right. My... Though I'm not a doctor, I would suggest that probably cases where there are medical conditions like asthma, that there needs to be a discussion between you and your school principal and the school nurse to try to determine what's the best course moving forward there. You know, this... I'm sorry? They'll send me right back... Okay. Well, when they do that, then you and I'll go back together. How about that? All right. Why don't we do this? Why don't I offer... Why don't I offer this? Can you hear me now? I can't, as one board member, speak for the whole board, but the board does have additional business. Hold on, please, just for God's sakes. I mean, I... The board does have other matters, including a student matter that they have to consider in closed session. I'll offer to hang around immediately after the open session. Try to answer questions as I can. If I don't have answers, I'll try to get them for you. But I don't... I'm sorry? On what? On what? You want me to vote? You want the board to vote tonight on whether her child with asthma is going to have to... I've offered two, Hoss. I've offered two. All right. You know, I... All right. I don't know that I have that answer, but I'll look into it. Yeah. Right, and I'm not one of those. Yeah, I am. Do your work. Hey, why don't you... Let me tell you something, buddy. Why don't you keep up with me for about two or three weeks and see how much of this work I do?
All right. We are...
What's that? Hey. Nobody is. Yeah, right. Right.
All right. We're... Mr. Breeden, thank you for your offer. And we're going to move on to action items. Board members, we need to approve the minutes for July 12, 2021. Do you have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the minutes of July 12, 2021, as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board members, you have the minutes for July 19, 2021. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussions, board members, regarding those minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Bocock, you okay? Keeping up with me? Okay. Board members, you have received the bills for July 2021. Do we have a motion? Or, Dr. Scheichl?
I recommend approval of the bills as presented.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the July 2021 bills and mileage. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation and approve the July 2021 bills and mileage as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussions regarding the bills? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Board members, we have policy revisions, which... Is Dr. Alderfer here? Yes. He presented to us at the last board meeting, which are policy changes that we went over. Dr. Scheichl?
I recommend approval of the policies as presented for information at the last board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichl. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the policies presented. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bid on the air handler replacement for Turner Ashby. Dr. Alderfer, are you gonna...
Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Scheichl. The bid for the air handler replacement at Turner Ashby High School was properly specified and advertised. Eight firms were sent bid packages. One firm attended the pre-bid conference, and one firm responded with a sealed bid as follows. Riddleberger Brothers Incorporated for Mount Crawford, Virginia, of a total of $188,400. My recommendation is to award the contract to Riddleberger Brothers Incorporated in the amount of $188,400.
And I do recommend to award the contract to Riddleberger Brothers as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Alderfer and Dr. Scheichl. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the bid for the air handler replacement at Turner Ashby High School. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. English Language Arts Textbook Adoption, Dr. Shiflett. Thank you.
Chair Reed, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichl. The K-5 English Language Arts Textbook Adoption Committee decided not to adopt a text series for the 21-22 school year, but rather has adopted supplementary decodable texts, which will be used for whole-class instruction in K-2 and for small-group instruction in grades three to five, so that teachers will have adequate materials to support implementation of the phonics lesson plan and differentiated instruction. The supplementary resources ensure that students have adequate instruction and practice using an explicit and systematic approach to reading instruction, using research-based formative assessment to meet the needs and the literacy growth of individual learners. The committee determined that it seemed more appropriate to wait to adopt new curriculum materials after the teachers have had the opportunity to complete the letters course of study. At that time, we felt we would be in a better place to determine what resources would be most appropriate for differentiated instruction, as well as we are wise in investing of the available funds that we would have. Also, in grades six to 12, the textbook adoption committee decided to pilot McGraw-Hill's Student SINK resources to determine if it... How well it aligns with the division's English transfer goals that we have developed and revised over the past three years as part of our work using Understanding by Design with Jay McTieh. There is one pilot at each grade level. The committee plans to reconvene in the spring to determine if the teachers feel that the study sync provides adequate rigor and a variety in its resources and provides a robust curriculum and meets the instructional goals and the needs of diverse learners.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett.
And I recommend approval of the English Language Arts supplemental materials and the pilot textbook as presented by Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichl. Board members, you've seen the superintendent's recommendation regarding the English Language Arts supplemental materials and pilot textbook. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the English Language Arts Textbook Adoption Committee decision along with the decision in grades six and 12, six through 12.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Any questions or discussion, board members? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Board members, we'll move to other business. Mr. Breeden? Do you have anything?
A man.
Okay. Mr. Falk?
I'll pass.
Dr. McQuilkin?
Pass.
Mr... Dr. Scheichl?
Pass.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to all of you who have been here this evening and spent your time with us. Please keep in mind that there are 11,000 students in Rockingham County Schools, and we continue as a board to do the best that we can for all of those students. I appreciate your time that you've shared with us this evening. I'm glad that we were able to get through all of our speakers tonight. I know it was a little bit of a long road. I wish you safe travel home. It's a little bit late tonight, so please be safe. Thank you. Board members, we have reason to go into closed meeting. Do we have a motion to enter the closed meeting?
Chair Reed, I'd like to make a motion to enter closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 for personnel and A2 for student matter.
Did you do A1 and A2?
I'm sorry?
A1 and A2?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
A2 student matter.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or anything, board members? Okay, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session.